Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the um. Are we ready? Yes ma'am. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the um work session to order at five P M. Um Alex, do we have anybody to pray?
Uh Nate Osgood.
Chief Osgood. Alright. Is gonna open us up with the prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for the opportunity you've given us here to gather to, to serve you and serve our city and serve our citizens and I just pray that you would have your hand on our council and the decision makers tonight as we discuss our city business, that we would do it in a way that is pleasing to you. And most of all, we just thank you for sending your Sunday night on the cross for our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. Alright, I wanna start before we get started with the work session, I wanna let everybody know, we do have a public hearing at six P M. So we may have to stop the work sessions, do the public hearing, and then reconvene the work session. I think we've had to go through it a couple of times um here, so just a heads up. But first, um first thing on the work session agenda is discussion by Representative Ben Robbins on potential collaboration on future projects with the city. Hey, how are you doing?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
Good, I got a couple of handouts I wanted to give y'all, just really the COVID section, a few things. Um, one of each there on the uh. You're welcome. So really what I wanted to, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
What I wanted to talk about was uh, we had really two issues on potential projects that we can work together on. One is um, as the city of Silicon moves towards developing the recreational complex and earth is being built, we have a glaring problem, which is the Mill Village Refuge adjacent to that, that has to be addressed. And I know the issue of that being in the county, but the city of Silicon home, several lots within the Mill Village are in the city of Silicon and the city owns the streets. So um, I had at one of the unearthing events, the house came, uh, his chief of staff came to the meeting towards the Mill Village and said, you people in Silicon have to do something about that Mill Village, that that place because it's a third world country. Uh, also had uh, the director of a DECA come and tour the Mill Village. So what we, what, and I've met with Pat Lyle, county administrator, county administrator. So what I wanna talk to the city about is forming one of two things. There's a thing called a capital improvement district or just an improvement district. So what that is, is a partnership between Talley County, Silicon City, and I would suggest Oak Grove. Uh, already met with the county and we've had conversations, Pat Lyle is looking into possible consultants that could put together a feasibility study on what to be done with the Mill Village. But what that said, talking to the state, what we can do is you apply for a C D B G, Talley County apply for a C D B G, Oak Grove apply for a C D B G. All those monies can then be pooled together because you can then put it to the capital improvement district, such as like the Avondale Mills Improvement District. And so then you can use all three for a pot of money. And also, if there's an entity out there, I can then request money in general fund budget to go towards an entity. Whereas right now, there's nothing for me to say fund X, there's nothing to, there's nothing there. So all, all I'm talking about now is working with the city and y'all having some discussion on who you would like to be the face or work with us and then get with uh, I've already talked with the county, to get others together and then go from there, conversations on how we form this and what that would look like. The other thing uh, is with that, USDA has a program that they will fund an entity on community cleanup. And talking with the state director of the USDA, I feel very confident that we could get additional funding to clean up the Mill Village as it would fit that definition of community cleanup. And you can fund a vehicle, but you've gotta have a vehicle to take those funds and accept it. And so with the ci- city of Silicon, some of those lots being in the city, they have to be at the table and it's a partnership that we need to form and I think we need to start those conversations because people are already making requests now from budgets in Montgomery. Unless we have some entity set up, there's no request that could be made by me or our senators.
Question. A lot of the property is owned by the state because it's not paying their taxes or whatever. Is there a way of also requesting from the governor that we give ownership of those lots so we can actually do something with them rather than just have them owned by the state as part of the project?
Yeah, so there's, there's that, there's two things. One, if property is owned by the state of Alabama, a municipality or government entity can request that property from the part of revenue for a hundred dollars and you'll get a deed. So all you have to do is pay them a hundred dollar administrative fee and you get a deed if you are a government entity.
So did we go ahead and put a list together? Because it'd be easy to put that list together and do that anyway.
Yes, I would go ahead and do that, that's something the city wanted to do, if the city wanted to take ownership. Or if the, this third party quasi-public-private partnership would wanna do it. And the thing about, the second point would be is if it's already sold for taxes and another individual owns it, that the, we'll say improvement district would have the authority to create ordinances such as nuisance ordinances that the county has no authority to do. So you, we prevent the situation from happening again. But with that, you, you could actually have more power than even the city of Silicon uses or exercises in that the improvement district could not only find, place an assessment on your property, but they could exercise uh, they, they could foreclose on that lien or assessment. So failure to cut grass, the improvement district could then foreclose and take your property over and they could own your property.
Who enforces that?
It would be the improvement district.
A separate entity?
It would be, it'd be the improvement district.
Ma'am, I have a question. Say we, we, we do this and we take ownership of those properties and this may be a read my question. If we take ownership of those properties, therefore, we would be responsible for curbside pickup just like we do with our, with our regular people, am I right in saying that?
Right, when you say we, it's not y'all.
Okay.
Y'all would have nothing to do with it.
So what, so the street?
Y'all would just be a pass through.
Okay, so the street department wouldn't have, there wouldn't be any extra on the street department maybe that's playing a code or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, there'd be no extra burden on them, it would just be a pass through in that you would be able to receive funds that you could then put into the project. So you could apply to pass those funds directly to the.
And this is just, and this is the clean up right there behind where earth is going, I'm, I'm going to assume, kinda?
What, that could be determined by the board, as in you would just.
What board, ma'am?
That, that's what I was gonna ask.
That pr- pr- regular board?
Right, it would be, it would be the improvement district. So what I'm asking for y'all to do, y'all don't take any specific action.
Sure.
But what you need to do is decide, one, if you want to be part of the improvement district. Two, we need to have conversations with the county commission and town of Oak Grove and then form, start discussing a board and then members, residents and owners of property in the Mill Village can petition to form a district. And then from those government entities that will be part of the district would nominate an individual to be on said board.
So, hold on, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. We're gonna, the city council is gonna appoint somebody to be a part of that board or appoint somebody to help build the board?
The way I envision it, this is all up for discussion, I don't own anything, I just want y'all to be a part of it. Uh, but the way I envisioned it was every government entity would nominate people to be on that board.
And that, you already have like some, some rules and stuff?
Well, no, there aren't, the, the, the board itself would establish the rules, its own rules. But there are other improvement districts across the state that we can just copy and paste and change according to what needs to be done. Nobody, so nobody's used an improvement district for life, they're always used for economic development.
Isn't that what Hudson's property is? They have one of the Hudson property republics and took one of all of his credit?
That could be an improvement district.
How many, how many people usually serve on um this type of board or district?
It, it just varies. You could have uh, from three up to eleven from what I read. I, I'm just suggesting this and I think the next steps would be plan a time where we can get together and have a meeting with other government entities about how we move forward and we all get, and basically get legal opinions on what, what the process we need to be, because it is a little bit of a cumbersome process.
Well, when you get with everybody else and when you come up with the time and date, can you just let us know and then we'll um, we'll send, we'll decide who we wanna send to be a part of that meeting?
Yeah, that's perfect.
I think we can agree that it's something we wanna explore, so.
It's worth looking at, no doubt.
And the, the other thing is um, everyone knows there's a housing shortage in the city of Silicon that I've had uh, meetings with the Alabama Home Builders Association about how to build and develop housing in small and rural communities. And based upon the fact that the city of Silicon owns so much land in their city limits, that the Home Builders Association is interested for Montgomery in working with the city on developing a subdivision or some new form of housing in Silicon. They believe they could create a program that they could then use, whether that be Demopolis or Jasper or other parts of the state that are in the same situation. But uh, what we would have to do is basically, again, figure out a time to meet with them and it would have to be some sort of another kind of quasi-government entity that could get the tax status of the government, but not have burdensome regulations to govern. But we could get some financial support from the Home Builders Association and we'd have a partnership with local home builders on developing homes in the area. But we would need the government to give the land for, they all currently own.
So what's the deadline on the um, the cities or municipalities to apply for those money?
That isn't an application or grant, it's a conversation to be had and it's uh, if you're willing to do it and then if you're willing to partner with the home builders. And then would you partner with them and give them the land and all, and provide them with the, this third rail quasi-government, public-private partnership?
That's definitely a big conversation.
They would do the private project, work with local home builders, develop housing. You just have to give them the land and then there would be parameters on who could live there or not. And you'd have to live there as a resident, you have to uh, um, and possibly set some sort of income standards who can live there. So, you know, you wouldn't just give someone a second or third home, they would flip the meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I like, I, I would be ready to pursue that, that idea first before we did the other action. And I'm sure we can do them both at the same time to explore.
Yeah, you could do them both at the same time.
But I like that home builders idea because we definitely need, you know, me and Dr. Ogden was talking the other day, we have a lot of school teachers that travel from Chelsea, Birmingham, Ellicity, Auburn to come to work because, you know, they didn't have anywhere to buy a home now. There are nurses.
So I think we're excited about this time. So whenever you get that date, will you give it to Alex so that she can let us know and we'll let you know who's gonna attend?
Well, I think what would be better is y'all just let me know who and then we can, and the same thing with the home builders issue too. Uh, and then I'll get the people that we've already had meetings with and try to say, because I'd hate to say you're gonna put, you know, so-and-so and then they can't come to a meeting. More like we know who it is and then we schedule a meeting around, everyone, everyone's available.
Okay.
So.
So we'll get that, we'll get that um, information over to you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks ma'am, you're so good.
Have a good day.
Good to see ya.
I do, sir.
Okay, next, um, number two on the work session agenda, discussion that's necessary by shop superintendent and for to transfer a vehicle from administration and finance to the shop. It's in.
He said work if you say, what did you need?
Oh, well, just to see if you had anything um, additional information to um, to offer us. It's just about you transferring that vehicle from administration and finance to the shop. Number three, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief, one day using city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding budget amendment for nuisance and abatement expense to be moved from building services department, zero one zero dash five seven one dash four two five two one dash zero 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 to the police department, zero one zero dash five two zero dash four two five two one dash zero zero zero, totaling one hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. No additional funds requested. This is just, you're asking that the um, this is an abatement funding be transferred to the police department?
It's correct, ma'am, President, Mayor, I defer to the city of Carter.
Okay, Alex?
Yes ma'am, that's all we're asking for and by doing so, this is going to streamline the process. Because of the new nuisance abatement officer, Josh Coleman is here now, he's gonna start doing the purchase orders. The money stays in building services, Josh will be unable to do the purchase orders, receive the merchandise, or whatever the action was.
And this is the money that's already been allocated for nuisance abatement? We're simply just transferring the money with the, the technically the ownership of the department?
Correct, and then the police department will assume responsibility for the future for the nuisance and abatement campaign.
I, I have no problem with the money being moved to PD, I'm just curious to why are we doing that?
Alex?
Um, just streamline the process and make it easier so there's no delays in the future.
Okay, has Josh, has he been caught up on all the complaints and everything that's been going on?
Speaking of Josh, Josh will be happy to answer all your questions.
And is Mike, is there a meeting held about this as well? That's another thing with the building services department?
There has not been meetings with the building services department, this was an action that the mayor asked us to do.
Josh, but are some of the responsibilities are the building services?
The funding comes from the nuisance abatement, so Josh will be in charge of all of that.
But some of the responsibilities are part of building services?
Yes.
Alright, just tell the, Mike, did you have something to add to this? So you're okay with this being transferred out? You don't have anything extra to add?
Actually, Mike asked for this to happen.
I know, okay, that's why I said we do this.
That's what we need to know.
That's how we need to. And as far as the building services having anything to do with it, we will officially notify them in an email whenever that's applicable.
Oh, okay, alright, and so looking forward, this is the most effective and efficient way, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I had some updates from the nuisance.
Laura had another question, nobody heard you.
Does that fall within your job description to be able to do purchase orders? I just wanna make sure that the city's covered, you know, on our end of things so it doesn't come back on us. It's just a task. Okay, I didn't know that was.
And I think everybody's happy with it on both sides, that's what I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm too, I'm just.
Any more questions on that at all? We're ready for the update, sorry.
No problem. So I've got uh, good news where the contract has been assigned, has been signed with Mintz Machine. And I know that's been a long process, but ultimately that's, that has been completed. And today I met with Clay and Elena Mintz to uh, basically introduce myself and I'm working towards meeting with all of the um, nuisance and abatement board soon. Um, we do have a new form, I'm gonna bring those up to you. It's a nuisance complaint form. Uh, Shannon had a copy of an older form and um.
I do, I do have a question, so who's gonna be um, so will you be running the nuisance abatement meetings um, moving forward now?
I'll be attending them, but as far as the government.
That's right. But you're gonna, yeah, because we have some updates on that as well too, because we still have some vacancies that we're gonna have to get is district one, three, and four. So we need one person per district.
I've got, I'll have somebody next to me, I'll have, I've, I've reached out to somebody, so that'll clear me up.
So we can get that um, get those seats back, feel, that way we can be on track. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Uh, so as far as the nuisance and abatement form, I spoke with Shannon about uh, two weeks ago and she went to go look for the form uh, from several years ago and, and could not find it. So basically just revamped it from an old form that was in the um, in one of the old files and just um, pleased it up, I guess is the, the way I see it.
Looks good, Josh.
Thank you much.
She's mentioned you also asked people to include photos, if that would be helpful.
So ultimately, this is the start of the process and then I'll be following up directly with, with the individuals. So uh, it, it's just a initiation of a, of a complaint. Then I have something to put in a file and, and start following up on the case. And um, there was a stack of about sixty-eight cases after Officer Metta retired. That was sitting on the desk for me when I arrived. Um, I have reviewed forty-five of the cases since I've been here, out of the sixty-eight and I've actually cleared nine of them. So I'm working towards getting all of those sixty-eight reviewed prior to my first meeting with nuisance and abatement board to start discussing those. Uh, I've gone to every single property to uh, to review, update case status and, and if I am uh, able to find someone there to go ahead and update with notes. And um, so that was uh, that was pretty much the gist of the update. Um, during the meeting with Clay and Elena today, they were asking me, you know, what my timeline looked like. And of course, I am explaining that I'm four weeks into this, so I've hit the ground running. But um, I actually have a handful of cases that uh, were situated on Main Avenue, decent property. Are, is everybody familiar with, with that? So I looked back in the old case file and um, correct me if I'm wrong, but twenty-twenty-two was when things finalized. And I'm trying to catch up, so clarify if I'm off course there. But that was the one that I mentioned to them that I knew had gone through the nuisance and abatement board, had gone to council and at that point would assume that we would move forward uh, with those properties uh, with that contract.
We had a public hearings about it, the county and everything.
So um, because they had some follow-up questions about um, asbestos and some things I'm not gonna get into the weeds with, but some of my follow-up questions, I spoke with uh, Mr. Livingston about those uh, those properties and he actually was talking about having to start the process over again. Um, and I'm, I guess we need to discuss that further, but that is something that I thought I was gonna be able to move forward on.
Start the process over in the basic room?
We just had a public hearing in February to readdress those properties since they, he had worried about the statute limitation and stuff.
But everything, everything was finalized and what?
I thought that's what we have to do for.
Since y'all were the last ones that touched that, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, every, everything was finalized and from my understanding, if he had it cleaned up by the time we had got somebody um, you know, had got a bid back for us to get these, these things taken care of, if he had got it cleaned up, then we would move on to the next one, but if it hadn't been cleaned up, we still had to um.
Well, I'd like to refer to Mr. Livingston to maybe clarify something, maybe.
As Josh said, I just, this afternoon, I'll, I'll handle this meeting. We, we, I don't know what the correct word would be, we basically walked wise on this indecent. We're given thirty days and I think at this point, we're taking a big chance to, to back a new process if it don't start over. Now, I'm not saying that we have to understand, we need to.
Start over means what? We have to have more public hearings, give them another thirty days?
I don't think we need to start over because at that last meeting, from my understanding, everything had been finalized and it had been done. And by the time we had somebody in place to do this, if he had cleaned it up, then good for him. But if he had not cleaned it up, then we were gonna take action with these um, with these people that we hired.
And prior to that, he'd been given over eight years, am I right?
And then, yeah, over your guys, but a home still look the same they looked twenty years ago.
Yep.
No, I don't think we should start.
What we just need to talk about, I'm not saying we have to start over, I'm saying, as Josh asked me, so.
I think since we got this bid back, we need to just move forward, that's.
We'll leave them hanging.
Is that, is that alright? Because we've been waiting for this, this is what we've been waiting for, this is what everybody's been waiting for.
So when can we give them a start date if we choose to go there?
So if we're moving forward with these properties and everything is situated with council's approval, then I'd say uh, beyond asbestos issues, that I could start working towards something next week.
Sounds good.
I think we've already agreed to move forward.
We have, we're just waiting for this.
It just came up.
Yeah, we had another public hearing concerning properties in February that I think.
And I wasn't aware of that, so.
The only thing that um, put it behind us, we had to revisit it, so um, we had to put this stuff, yeah, we had to revisit. Thank you so much for this update and I'm excited about this and I think everybody's gonna be excited about this. Do you mind giving us an update every um, first council meeting in the month just so we can see the process since we actually have somebody in place to take care of this?
I don't, I don't have problems with it at all.
So that way, you know, we just want everybody to know we are taking these nuisance problems seriously and we are doing what we're supposed to do, doing our part to get them abated.
No problem, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Alright, you have something additional on that, Alex? Are you just waiting for the next item?
No, I'm, I'm, the rest.
Alright.
And I wanna make sure everybody can hear me, so that's, my mic's not working, so I apologize. We'll have that looked at.
So we're gonna go to number four?
Yes ma'am, number four.
Alright, number four, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding budget amendments and move funds within, within the administrative and finance department, no additional funds requested. So you're requesting to move some funds around in your department?
Yes ma'am, line items to include the appropriation for the flagpole. Um, as most of you are aware, we had to have flagging law. Um, we had to order one and that put the appropriation line in the way. Um, the city clerk will take the money from their budget and move it to the flagpole to cover that expense. Um, all this was provided in the Rita heads. We're also going to pull the telephone equipment inventory line for fifteen hundred dollars out of the red, office operating supplies and expenses, department inventory, and like I said, the flagpole.
Thanks for that, um, I don't see a problem with that, do you guys have any questions on that?
I'm, can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
You mentioned in your last report last week, out to plus you, that we still have some uh, bank account reconciliations that are not done?
That's correct, sir, ten.
And, and when is that expected? When's that on the list? Because we need that before we can get audits done to be able to do all sorts of other projects.
We have sent all the reconciliations to the auditors, they're reviewing them now. They are aware that for the last several years, the accounts haven't been balanced. Um, with all due respect, the accounts haven't been balanced in three years and I've balanced twenty in one year. So um, due to manning, I can't stop what I'm doing to balance the bank accounts when they haven't been balanced previously for three years. Um, there's one of me that's balancing and I don't have anybody else in the office at this time. Um, we are interviewing two accounting clerks, Jane, I believe uh, ten June. We got ten applicants for a county manager, which Jane has already brought over to the civil service board. And we have seventeen applicants for the business license clerk.
Good.
Um, we're doing the best we can, our overtime has exceeded, uh, which we have kept the council president informed of. Yes, sir.
Uh, when you hire those accounting specialists, that, they'll kinda do some of the same things you're doing now, right? They'll kinda help you out with balancing and stuff?
No, sir. Oh, one of the accounting clerks is gonna take over the payroll from Sandy Swinton, the accounting specialist.
I got you.
Um, when the accounting manager shows up, then she can help us with the balancing.
Oh, I just didn't know how that works, thanks.
Right, we wanna make sure that we're keeping the internal controls. So anybody that's writing checks from any account does not need access to balance the accounts because that's an internal control issue.
Alright, thank you so much for that too, Alex. So will you just keep us updated too with specials since you had so many people to apply? And just let us know as those um, accounts are, are gonna be balanced up?
Yes, sir, I can work on the four that I didn't get to last month. Um, because for May, we've already balanced sixteen and today's the fourth of May, of June. So we have four accounts from last month in this tick month that we haven't been able to get to yet.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good on that? All right, so we're going to go to number five, discussion that's necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding revising the boarding to approve ordinance number two-two-six-eight dash two-four, back to school and severe weather preparedness, state sales tax holiday approved by the Silicon City Council, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as a direction of the Alabama Department of Revenue.
Before I begin that, I want to back up to number four, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, we're also going to have to move money to cover our property insurance expense, uh, the dues. We had, uh, Ms. Brown is new, and I've been new, and we hadn't planned for those expenses previously. So we're just going to cover the money within our budget, we just want to make sure you guys are aware. Um, professional fees, that's for the auditor. Furniture fixtures, other office equipment, claims and damaged, and data processing equipment. The total for us to move is around thirty-two thousand dollars, but it's all within our budget.
Oh, Alex, um, I know you just told us, I don't know if we need to see, do we need to see the actual line items that is coming from and being moved to?
If you look on your tablet, tablet, under forward WS sixteen CM, you'll see two budget amendment sheets. And they're there, but I have a hard copy, if you'd like to look at them, ma'am.
No, this is fine. And just to, just for my own information, I don't even know if this will make a difference. When we get ready to do the next, the twenty twenty-five budget, how would, how would this look versus what was budgeted for last year? So would it, would it change on the old budget when we get our, you know, our budget sheets to budget for twenty twenty-five? When we look at it line by line and see what was actually budgeted for the original budgeted items?
No, once we update it, the numbers will change.
Okay.
But they'll all be within ours, and then we'll be able to accurately reflect this year twenty-five.
But the dollar amount won't change, but it'll show us where you actually changed that money on the line items?
The dollar amount will change.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions on that? So we can go on to number, um, five?
So at the last council meeting, the city council approved ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight dash twenty-four to authorize tax-free weekends for back-to-school and severe weather preparedness. Um, Ms. Nix, you guys have signed it. However, when we sent it to the Alabama Department of Revenue, they asked us, because we want to do this forever, so we don't have to continuously come back to the council, which was discussed, they asked us to add in when the dates would begin. So we've highlighted that on your tablets. And it says, beginning at twelve oh one AM on the third Friday in July and ending at twelve midnight the following Sunday. That's for the back-to-school state sales tax. And the severe weather preparedness is covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period each year, beginning on the last full weekend in February, twenty twenty-four.
And are we going to have to re-vote on that, um, tonight, Alex, or did you just amend it?
No, ma'am, we can't amend it without, um, council consent. So they've asked us to give you a new one, which is on your tablet. And it's still twenty-two sixty-eight, and I also have paper copies if you'd like to look at the old one and the new one.
Anybody need that?
Lauren, do you want to look down?
I'm good.
Are y'all good on number five?
Yep.
Everybody? All right, so we're going to go to number six, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to amend resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, general fund operating budget for the city of Silicon to provide funding for contract entities budget amendment request.
The only difference is parking recreation, and I did call Steve on Friday, I'm sure he'll confirm that if there's questions. Um, we are not taking any money from the parking wreck. Instead, when we did this, um, um, a few weeks ago, on the seventh of May, we gave Steve an allocated amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars. However, we did not have that in the budget, we had to take twenty-two thousand dollars from his earmarked money. You guys already approved his earmarked money for the twenty-two thousand, but now we need to correct this resolution because we had to pay him. So we need to correct this resolution to say we're decreasing it to fifty-five from the general fund because you guys have already approved the resolution to take the twenty-two from his earmarked money. Any questions?
So it was just a, um, just a mathematical error, and then we just, we got an actual coming in lower than what we anticipated?
No, it's going to be the exact same dollar amount, we're just differentiating where we're pulling the money from.
Okay, all right.
Mm-hmm, but he is not losing any money.
But are we still in the red, um, with our account? Would that still leave us in the red with the, um?
No, ma'am, you're at zero dollars.
Okay.
But speaking of red. I have an update for Ashton Fowler.
Yeah, I was about to ask you. So is this, is this the updated one and?
As of the thirty-first of May.
And this is for the, um, the sales tax?
Yes, ma'am. So as of right now, all the departments are in the black with the exception of the fire department. As you can see, they're in the red, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, zero, twenty-four, thirty-eight cents. And that is due to resolution number seventy-five, twenty twenty-three, and his pay raises. The street department is no longer in the red, Reed.
That'll change this next project cycle, yes, and the bond issue from the pay raises are red.
Yes, that's correct.
Does it change, it should change every month though, right?
It does.
It's going, yeah.
Everybody goes up, but the fire department, because they go down, because they're negative.
Oh.
Which is what we want, we want the numbers to go down.
But we're trending in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am, we are. And as of right now, for earmarked money, you'll notice in the third column, we've accumulated one point seven million and some change.
How, how much are we off from our projected, that we projected when we get? Because we have, how many months did we have left?
We only have five months left, so you're about two point three million off.
Oh, okay, but with five, okay, but that's still.
We have till September thirtieth.
So you're two million away from the fourth.
Yeah, but we have five months left, so we're kind of, okay. And we'll just keep an eye on this every month, you'll update us with this?
Yes, ma'am, I forgot to include it in the, uh, financial update for the last.
All right, do anybody have any questions on that? Lauren, uh, y'all know I'm going to.
I'm good. I'm good, thank you.
All right. So we're going on to number seven?
We are.
Discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to accept the bid for improvements to the Silicon Municipal Airport Taxiway Rehabilitation Bid Proposal.
That's correct, so for the airport, um, the airport, we accepted two bids. We had two bid proposal, one from Dunn Construction and one from Vulcan Materials Asphalt and Construction LLC. Um, they both did come underbid. Um, however, Dunn Construction came in at one million ninety-three thousand, six hundred five dollars. They are the lowest bid. We'd be saving money by going to the lowest bid, and that is what the recommendation from the mayor, the city clerk, and the airport is recommending. So we are asking you to vote on this evening, as they are the lowest.
Any questions on that, Alex?
Can I have one thing really quick? This will come up soon, the airports have been required by the FAA to close the, uh, the approach on runway nine. The aircraft cannot navigate into Silicon to be able to land from the usual approach because eight acres of trees have grown so high that they can't visibly be able to approach, safely approach the runway. They've been unable to, uh, to get help from Reed in cutting that eight acres, obviously you can't do something like that. So we will be hearing from them in the near future about trying to find a way to assist them in getting that eight acres of scrappy trees cut down where the airport can be used for many approaching, um, landings, so.
Thanks for that update, Lee.
We need the manpower with it, to do something like that, that thing is huge.
Yes, massive.
Number eight, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to refund overpayment of garbage services to Michael Baker, eight seventy-eight center point row from June through December twenty twenty-three, totaling one hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
That's correct, from May through December of twenty twenty-three, the individual moved from his address, and we were not notified.
And we're just going to send him that refund?
Yes, ma'am, and that is on the agenda to go on tonight.
Okay, any questions on that, Alex? No? All right, number nine, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to review underwriter proposals for potential warrants, including timeline, timeline, estimated interest rate, associated these terms, types of buzz, and historical performance.
Thank you. What time is it right now?
Um, it is five forty, so we have twenty minutes till the, um, fully here.
Okay, perfect, I'm going to hand out the comparison of warrant or proposals that was completed by the administration and finance department. Um, in front of you are three, um, portfolios, one from Piper Sandler, the other one from Stiefel, and the third one from Lanier and Fraser.
And this information that you're going to pass us out is based on the information that was submitted to you?
Yes, ma'am, only facts and information. We've also included in our proposal page numbers for you to reference, so you know where we took the information from. But this one here, you didn't have to read all, every word for word, dollar for dollar.
Okay. And also to you guys, I, um, Alex and I talked this, um, second, third page. Because there's a lot of things that we know we have to do in this city and we want to make sure we don't forget about these items when, you know, if we decide to go to the border.
So the first thing we'd like to do is to thank the city council, the mayor, and Piper Sandler, Stiefel Public Finance, and Fraser Lanier for submitting the proposal for the warrant bond. And we'd like to also thank everybody else for being in attendance. As I know, this is a very, um, hot topic right now with the ma- master recreational plan. Like Tiffany said, in addition to the master recreational plan, the mayor had asked us to include any capital projects that we knew about, that other departments had come to us with. And we also looked at the capital list that the council has looked at previously. In addition to the master recreational plan, the city has paving needs of two point eight million dollars. We will need to redo portions of the museum for three hundred thousand, that includes the floors, the walls, and other various aspects due to the roof leaking. For those that are not aware, we're asking for another fire truck for one point two million. The historical post office, twenty-five thousand. Three seventeen West Third Street, their roof, for twenty-five thousand. The fire department, phase two of the station remodel for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The Food World Project for six hundred and fifty thousand. Drainage for two point three million, Lake Howard Bridge for one million. Lake Louise Bridge for three hundred and fifty thousand. The traffic signal for James Payton and Five Eleven for two hundred seventy-five thousand. The city portion on the TAP project with E D T, three hundred thousand. The Jake Craig Community Center upgrades is five hundred thousand. And we also would like to, uh, update our animal shelter for a hundred and fifty thousand. The total number that the city would like to ask added to the bond is ten point eight million dollars on top of the twenty-eight million dollars for the master recreational facility.
I got a question, um.
Yeah, sir.
Yeah, well, before we get to that, maybe we shouldn't, can this list be, can, can we decide on this list or, or?
Oh, yes, this is all up to you.
This is, okay.
These are just the facts that we were given by Reed, the fire department.
Okay, you just organized with everybody and just upwards.
Yes, ma'am, because if we're going to go to the bond market, we also need to upgrade some facilities in the city that have been neglected over the years past. This proposal, we consulted several resources from the GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association, and the Electronic Municipal Market Access, EMA. To proceed, to proceed, we facilitated the procedures from several trusted firms, which I stated earlier, Piper Sandler, Stiefel Public Finance, and Fraser Lanier. We also sent a request to Porter White and Company, but they did not submit a proposal.
All right, so I, I have.
I'm, I'm not done.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So following some criteria, um, that we got from other city clerks and municipalities, the things that we asked the bond personnel, underwriters to provide us are the types of bonds available, interest rates and terms, issuance process and timeline, their historical performance and experience, associated fees, which is what everybody's interested in, and a proposal overview. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Piper Sandler and respectfully ask if there's a representative from Stiefel.
Hold on, hold on, Alex, before we do that, hold on, hold on one second. Yeah, because this, this is a lot, and, and we only got, um, fifteen minutes. Um, so what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna request, because we do want to, um, we do have a timeline that we're trying to keep everything on.
Correct.
Is there a way for us to, to look over this and then call a special, I don't know if there would be a, a budget or a special work session for this before I?
How about we just hear Piper Sandler first, and then within six o'clock, we go into the meeting, and then we come out there here, let's hear their pitch and what they need to say, and then we can have our meeting later down the road.
I'm sorry.
Let's, uh, let them speak since they're here, come back with what they submitted, you know, let Piper Sandler speak for fifteen minutes when you go into the meeting, do a public hearing, come back, let them know.
Okay.
And we can, we still have a meeting down the road, but they're here, let us, let them do their pitch.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, everybody heard that?
And we understand this is a, um, open meeting, however, there is a gentleman's agreement that once one company starts talking, the other companies are asked to leave. So we would start with Piper Sandler and ask anyone from Stiefel Public Finance and Fraser Lanier to depart the premises. And you can just go outside. Thank you.
Outside the door here. Walter, you go. But we do have to stop at six, Walter, to go into a public hearing, so we're not trying to cut you off now, but all of that.
Hey, we're ready. I know we've, we've been here, um, before, Walter, could you just give us an overview of how all this worked? And, um, I know everybody probably have their own questions that they want to ask, um, so I guess just an overview of how this works and like a timeline, or how long this would take to get a bond issued?
Yeah, I, um, I responded to the inquiry from the city clerk as it relates to what was asked. And, um, I, I gave, sent a proposal here as it relates to that, all the details. And also went back in history in terms of my times here at Silicon. And I just laid it out, I think one of the questions was, what was a, what is a bond? And I went in and I broke it down relative to that, just to define and, and address the questions that were asked, you know, there. Um, so that's a thirty-eight page document that's right there in front of you that kind of lays that out. I can go through that. I can go through that or, or what have you. Uh, also in that document, I laid out history as it relates to this sports complex that the city's been entertaining. Uh, in this, in that document there, I have, uh, what we call a G thirty-seven, uh, letter, G, uh, G seventeen letter, that, that it goes back to two thousand sixteen actually, as it relates to this, in terms of, you know, equipping the city, running numbers for the city as it relates to that, that, uh, particular, uh, financing there. And that was before this administration, and it's rolled into this administration to get us to this particular point. So, I think that's something important as it relates to how you look at this. You know, uh, it's been a lot of knowledge done on this particular transaction relative to the sports complex, uh, in terms of this city, in terms of coming up with a plan and actually execute that. And there have been some things that have transpired over the course of the last year and a half, two years, as it relates to your sales tax and analysis done to that relative to, uh, to, to equip the city to be able to take on this endeavor, you know, there. So, uh, those are some things, services that I provided, you know, there over time, that's kind of outlined in that booklet, that, that is not subject to this process right here, relative to, you know, um, what's, what's being asked, you know, there. But in terms of timeline, there's a timeline in there, and, you know, the city is up against the wall as it relates to time. Uh, uh, September thirtieth is a key date for this city. Uh, we're, we're behind in audits right now, the twenty-three audit. If it's not available by September thirtieth, then Standard and Poor's pulls your rating. Myself and Tiffany and also the city clerk, we had a conference call back about a month or so ago as it relates to that. And, and, um, and that, that, we talked about that aspect of it after the call, cause I had been saying, look, we need to get a twenty-three audit. Uh, I was actually in the market with another transaction, Mobile County, to where we were actually able to do that transaction with a twenty-two audit with unaudited numbers. So I called Standard and Poor's to inquire as it relates to it, and they said, Walter, if you can get it done before September thirtieth, we, we will not pull the rating with, without the twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three audit. So, uh, it's a lot to this transaction as it relates to the sales taxes coming in, uh, as it relates to, uh, the structure of this transaction based on debt the city has, that you have to account for, uh, in terms of a ten million dollar price tag on some of the issues, or some of the things that are on the table right now. Those things have to be worked through in terms of how to fit this transaction into a budget where the city can actually take it on, you know, there, uh, relative to that. Uh, I wanna say this, um, I, I, I just happened to come to this meeting today, I didn't plan it or anything like that, I didn't plan to get up and talk, cause I didn't know that I was supposed to, you know, there. So, uh, forgive me for not being prepared totally for it, but that's kind of the, that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of what you have there in terms of the presentation, you know, there. So, but, but I've laid out a plan that I feel like can be executed, but it, it's gonna take a lot of work to get it done.
So you're saying that September thirtieth is the deadline?
Yes.
By inquiry, uh, with the higher ups, you think we, if we don't have the twenty-three audit, we still may be able to go through with it, or we need it by?
You need it by then, yeah, cause if you don't, they're gonna pull your rating.
Okay.
And then your costs will, your costs will go up dramatically if you issue, if you're able to issue a deal without that particular rating, cause you're rated A plus right now, could potentially get an upgrade to an A double A minus, which is really outstanding for the town based on what's going on here. But there are some issues with this deal, and it ain't just a, a wham bam, thank you ma'am, come in and do a deal, it's some, it's some really, it's some really hard legwork that needs to happen here. And, and over time, over the time that I've had an opportunity to work with this city and talk through these particular issues, you know, you know, feel like I have a lot of institutional knowledge and be able to, be able to possibly pull it off, you know, there. So, that's what I feel like I bring to the table, you know, there, this process in terms of, you know, having a bid or what have you there. I put, I put a price in there that, that I felt like is fair based on over the years that I've worked on this transaction that makes sense. Uh, it's not just something that I, I, I thought out relative to that. And it's, it's in there, it's probably in the presentation that was handed to you, and if you got questions as it relates to it, I'm more than happy to address those questions.
I just got a question about it, about the timeline.
Yes ma'am.
And this, this timeline right here, this is, cause we passed May twenty-four, so.
I just, i- is that?
Is this, is this an old one, or is this the one that if we were to get started about May twenty-four of this year?
No, no, May twenty-four, I think was the request of the post.
Okay.
You know, and I just put that in there, you know, that, and I, I don't, that doesn't look like what I have in the document, you know, there, I don't know where that came from, but I just kind of laid out all of the processes that have come, that have gone forth to this point.
I was just trying to make sure that we didn't miss something yet, but I know it's close, I know the time is ticking.
Yes ma'am. Uh, that booklet that you have that I sent, it, it's all in the back there relative to how it all lays out.
Walter, looking at this estimate fees and expenses, one point two five percent, that's on the actual bond itself, right?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. So if we take out a forty million dollar bond, then that's five hundred thousand dollars.
I have it on the map, but that's, that, that, that number that, that's in there.
Yes sir.
It's not to exceed.
Sure.
You know, there. So that, that, that puts the city in a position where we can work out a fee that, that's feasible for the city.
So, okay, and my next question, and I just have a couple. What is the, uh, I know, you know, the clerk's office shorthand, I'm pretty sure your office is too, just like everybody in America, how much work is the clerk's office gonna have to do once we get all this going? Is it fifty-fifty, eighty, twenty? How does that, how does that roll? I know there are certain things you have to do, then there are certain things they have to do, and.
Sure. Go ahead. Do you all put in place a resolution, allocation of funds for the sales tax?
Uh huh.
You know, we have to talk through that, you know, and how that plays into this deal, because, you know, that sales tax generally, one point five percent that you put on is generating an extra amount of dollars.
Sure.
Okay, so, we have to assess that in terms of how those dollars being used internally, and then also how those dollars be used from a standpoint of paying debt service on the, on, on, on the bond, you know, there. And see, here's something that we're dealing with, you know, you know, the market is changing just like everything else. You know, interest rates have gone up, okay? Wasn't like it was two years ago.
That's right.
You know, if we'd done this two years ago, it would be a whole lot different, but it's gonna be some, it's some things we gotta look at in terms of how we play this game to be able to put forward and get done what the city wants to get done. And there's a twenty-eight million dollar price tag on your sports complex, we gotta run the numbers, just to see how, how that plays into the overall game. You know, we may have to scale back, we may have to put in, who knows? And then you got another ten million dollar price tag there too. It, these are things you gotta work through, and it takes time to do that.
I get it.
So, those are just some issues that, that I see as it relates to this particular transaction, and how it plays out for, for the town.
Now I think, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes sir.
The clerk's office would have to reconcile those accounts in order to get the twenty-three audit on the way, does that break down?
We send the orders, our information, we have to base, you know, and.
If they can start back.
Yes.
So right now, everything they put in, they submit.
Yes. Around one.
How long is this process, if we say, how long is this process?
It's in there, it's in that timeline.
Then we're gonna have to move.
We can get this done by.
On page seven of ours is the exact same thing as page thirty, thirty-six of this.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to cut it short to.
Just get it smaller.
Got you.
But this, but still though, this isn't, it still is off because we didn't start by May twenty-fourth.
You know, May twenty-fourth is when Walter called the mayor.
Oh, so this is a timeline. Then we ask for.
Past events.
On the twenty-ninth. I don't understand that, I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to cut it, we're gonna have to cut it off so we can start the, um, council meeting and come back to this one.
Okay.
So, cause we have the, um, the public hearing. Alright. So we're gonna suspend the, um, the work session and start the council meeting, because we have the public hearing. So I'm gonna call, um.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at, um, five fifty-nine. Alright, gonna call the meeting to order at six P M. Alright, roll call, Laura Heath here, Lee Pearman. Nate Brewer.
Here.
Ashton Fowler.
Here.
Uh, here. Implication was given by Chief Osdood, and now we're gonna stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hogg, do you have a report for us today?
Just a couple of things, Madam President, so, let's make a couple announcements. Uh, I wanted to thank H R, they put up a booth a couple weeks ago down there at the apartment rent, that brought a lot of people into our city requesting positions. And we're very thankful for her for what she's done. We've given our positions filled a lot quicker we ever had anticipated.
Uh, Mayor, hold on, hold on one second, I think we're gonna have to stop you too, so we're gonna, um.
You want Sergeant, call the Gary first? Go ahead.
Alright. Alright, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve minutes of the regular work session held May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Need a second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Yea.
I need a motion to approve minutes of regular city council meeting held May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Alright, we have no old business, new business. Um, agenda item number nine is a public hearing in regards to the city entering into an amended and re, reinstated development agreement with Whorf Casual Seafood Silicon LLC. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, groups representing or supporting the same or similar, similar options are limited to one representative speaker. I'm not going to open the public hearing and call for comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this? Since there's no one, I'm now going to close the public hearing and call for action by council. I'm, I'm gonna need an intro, uh, so if, if to consider at this meeting, I would need an introduction.
I'll do it.
Alright. By Lee Pearman, if no action is taken at this meeting, I will need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Now I need a motion to approve resolution fifty-six dash twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Okay, so we're gonna suspend the council meeting. What time, six oh three? Six oh three P M, and we're gonna begin the work session. So we're back to the work session, Walter.
Sorry, and we obviously know we're gonna have to have another meeting specifically just for this, but I just, since they're here, I wanted them to say any kind of picture, anything they wanted to add to their, their, above their.
Well, from listening to them, we, we may not, since we have all the information, because that's what, um, like Walter said, you know, there's no need in explaining again what he submitted everything that we requested.
Sure.
So we can, um, we can just look over this information.
Well, let's let.
Ourselves, yes. But I was gonna ask, cause we cut Walter off to make sure he didn't have anything else to add. Walter, did you have anything else to add? I'm sorry, I had to cut you off.
Uh, it's okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry about that.
I, I, do, it, does the council have any questions for me?
Okay.
Actual questions?
I think we will once we divulge and all of this information, but I, I don't right now. An alcohol goes.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you.
Alright.
Ron, will you get the gentleman in hall?
Yes sir.
Are we still honoring that gentleman?
So Walter, he'll step out while he talks tonight?
And which one is it, um, Stiefel?
It's the page nine.
Did anybody else get out?
He's not out there.
He's not, he left?
I believe he left.
Alright, what about the other guys, the other, um, is Fraser and Lanier out there ever?
Oh, check.
We're not sure where he went.
So that's fine.
Alright, what about, um, what, what about Fraser?
I'm not sure where Fraser and Lanier are.
Okay, alright, so we'll go ahead and, um, conclude the work session.
Ma'am, I, I'd like to just briefly go through the packet so you guys know what you're looking at real fast. So Piper Sandler's on the city clerk's proposal, um, because everybody in the office did work really hard on it. Um, so from page six, seven, and eight is Piper Sandler's, and their timeline is June fourth through October first. And all we did was take their timeline from page thirty-five and thirty-six and consolidate it into one page to make it smaller. Stiefel is pages nine, ten, and eleven, and as far as their timeline, um, they weren't very specific on the timeline, um, and how long it was gonna take to do this project. For Nick, Fraser Lanier is on page twelve, their timeline is on page thirteen, and they're estimating sixty days from beginning to finish.
Sixty days?
Yes sir, sixty days. They expect the sale to take place between thirty and thirty-five days after the process begin, begins, and closing to take place about two months after, and that's on page fourteen.
Was that, was that dependent on if our audit had been completed?
No ma'am.
So they were saying it can be done whether the audit was completed or not as long as it was submitted?
Yes ma'am.
I hate to ask this, well, no, I don't hate to ask this. Is there any, um, is there any proof or backup that this is, that this has been done before? Have they done it before with an audit, audit being?
In his packet, the big white one?
Yeah.
Alright. So pages sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are each ones individual fees. However, on page twenty is what you guys are interested in, which is the comparison by the underwriters. We have Stiefel, they came back, um, and said they could work somewhere between four and nine dollars for every thousand dollars.
But, I know, I don't, I don't think, I think, I think we're more interested in.
Why, why, why are they contacted? Did they say, or is it in there that we had?
Because that's, that's our issue right, yeah, because that's our issue right now.
Correct.
They've done one or two today.
Yeah.
Cause you know, we can't control the order.
Yeah.
We don't know how fast we'll get that back.
Walter has something, but, but. But I think we need, we need to wait, she's explaining, um.
I'm sorry.
There, so, but you see what I'm saying, Alex, we're.
I do, and I'll get with Bob DeMora.
Yeah.
To find out, and have him send us an email. Um, but it's more than just the time, it, it's also a, a price issue. Um, the city clerk's office is responsible for providing factual information, um, and if we do a forty million dollar bond, we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars for Piper Sandler. And if you go on the high end for Stiefel at nine dollars for every thousand dollars, you're looking at four, you're looking at three hundred and sixty dollars, three hundred and sixty thousand on page twenty, and that's how much it's gonna cost. And Fraser Lanier, their highest is six at three forty-three.
But it's not, but it's not just about cost.
No, but it's not just about the time either.
It's not about the time, it's not about the cost.
It's about everything.
But it's about, it's.
All gotta come together.
Yeah, it does, but my biggest question right now is, no matter who we use, we don't, we don't wanna hire somebody or spend some money for anything if we're not in the position to where it can actually be done. That's, that's what my. Hire somebody or spend some money for anything if we're not in the position to where it can actually be done, that's, that's what my biggest concern is. So I just wanna make sure we're where we need to be and nobody, and I'm not saying nobody is.
Right.
That, you know, people are being straight shooters with us, we don't wanna, I don't want some expectations that can't be reached. I don't wanna get excited about something that's not gonna happen.
Right.
So, um, that's, that's the first thing, so with this being said, we need to make sure on this one. That what they're saying is what it's gonna be.
Correct.
If, I probably should've said that a little.
No, that's fine.
Just make sure that, you know, they can actually do what they say they're gonna do. So, alright, you wanna bring us on, um, the next one too, Alex, that they left? Are, are you still doing that one?
No, um. I thought you guys wanted to end it, so I went right through Stiefel, they did not provide a timeline. And as far as cost, they said they would negotiate between four and nine dollars up to the city council, and what we could, could not afford.
Okay.
Can you send them, ask them for a timeline as well?
Yeah, because we have to have it, because we have our own timeline, so we do need to know.
Correct.
What their timeline is, um, we, it has to match up.
Correct.
And we did speak with each, um, different underwriter, we've been sticking with Walter for about a year now. Um, but we thought it's to be best for the city and the constituents to do this, to make sure that. Everything's on board.
Okay, but everything like the timeline, the, um.
I'm just gonna call to do it, I'm almost gonna take you to the building, what we have to have on our.
That's right.
So yeah, that's the biggest thing though, that's, that's the biggest thing, um, Alex. To make sure we're actually ready to go into the buying market, uh, go to the buying market, and if not, what we need to do to make sure.
Timeline, cost, and what we have to have, right?
No problem, we will go back and take care of that.
Thank you, alright, so, um. I guess since we already started the council meeting and we're gonna reconvene, do I need to go over, um, the items that's gonna be on the, um, that we're gonna?
Run the chairs report.
Oh, I know, but I was trying to finish out the, um, the work session, so we're good, I don't have to run through this and stuff that we're gonna vote on tonight, y'all good with that?
Thank you, boy, you know, we all like to accept the, uh, reference to the Board of Education appointment.
Alright, and the accounts payable?
Yeah, stuff working.
So we're good, everybody good, so we're gonna end the work session for the second time? Alright, and we're gonna reconvene the council meeting back at six twelve P M. You got that time, Alex?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, you're eight, you can finish your report if you like, and I'm so sorry that I had to cut you off.
Well, it's quite understandable, Madam President, I just want to bring to attention. On June of, uh, twenty twenty-three, I presented a proclamation to this council to be read into the minutes. Declaring June the fourteenth as Lucille Anderson Day in Silicaga. At this time, I would like to extend an invitation to the citizens of Silicaga to join us in honor and remembrance of Lucille Anderson. On June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at ten A M here in front of City Hall. A tree has been planted and a marker will be placed. Refreshments will be available to lobby, in the left front lobby over here following the memorial, uh, dedication. As many of you know, Lucille Anderson was a dedicated and active member of the Silicag community for decades. Her contributions to Silicagas are numerous, and she will continue to be remembered for years and years to come. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Did we, did we set a time for that, you said June the fourteenth? Ten o'clock?
It'll be Friday week.
Alright, okay, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna start back with the number, um, ten, I need a motion to approve the revised ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight dash twenty-four. Back to school and severe weather preparedness state sales tax holiday approved by the Silicag City Councils, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. This is at the direction of the Alabama Department of Revenue. The city clerk treasurer to read ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight dash twenty-four into the meeting minutes if there's anything, um, to add. Alex, is there anything additional to add?
No, ma'am, there's not.
But we went up, alright, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, next item, I need a motion to approve resolution number sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four to amend resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four. Fiscal year twenty-four general fund operating budget for the city of Silicaga to approve funding for contract and entities budget amendment request. This is to amend the budget amendment for the parking recreation department to reflect a decrease from the general budget to earmarked money totaling twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. City clerk treasurer to read resolution number sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes if there's anything to add.
There's nothing to add.
Okay, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve resolution number sixty-four dash twenty twenty-four to accept the bid for improvement to the Silicag Municipal Airport taxiway rehabilitation with Dunn Construction Company Incorporated. Of Birmingham, Alabama. A G C L number eight contingent upon available funds, city clerk to read, city clerk treasurer to read resolution number sixty-four dash twenty twenty-four into meeting minutes if there's anything additional to add.
There's nothing to add.
Okay, need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Alright, I heard Lee, I'm sorry, he brought in.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve the vehicle transfer of a two thousand two four F one fifty. Been number one F T R F one seven W six two K C O one five five eight point from administration and finance to the shop department, need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve budget amendment to move funds within the administration and finance department totaling thirty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and nine cents. See attached budget amendment, no additional funds requested, we're simply moving, um, line item funds to another line item. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve budget amendment to transfer nuisance and abatement expense from Building Services Department. Zero one zero dash five seven one dash four two five two one dash zero 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 to the police department. Zero one zero dash five two zero dash four two five two eight day zero 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 totaling one hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents, no additional.
You misstated four two five two one, you said four two five two eight.
Well, let's do this over. Which one did you sign this?
You said four two five two.
Okay, so, it's to the police department, so zero one dash five two, zero dash four two five two one dash zero 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 totaling one. Hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents, no additional funds requested. Alright, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Next, um, item, I need a motion to approve budget amendment to transfer workers comp insurance expense from administrator and finance. Zero one zero dash five one two dash four four five zero four day zero 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 to the. Up, to the, approach? Approach, flat code R and M expense. Zero one zero dash five eight six dash four six five zero four day zero 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 totaling two thousand dollars, no additional funds requested. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve funds for garbage services, I need motions to approve refund for garbage services to Michael Baker, eight seventy-eighth Center Point Road. From June through December twenty twenty-three totaling one hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Now we need to appoint a Board of Education board member to the five-year term expiring April twenty twenty-nine. Term expired for Amy Price, six applicants applied, Yamaire Danzo, Brittany Green, Blaine Green, Steve Hartseal, John Parrish, and Senator Barlow. I would like to open the floor and call for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Blaine Green.
Okay, that's Fowler. Nominated Blaine Green. Okay, are there any, uh, more nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Parrish.
Yeah, Councilman Perriman nominated John Parrish. Here, are there any more nominations? No. Here, no other nominations, I need a motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Alright, that's okay, I heard Ashton first, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna cue you in my seat.
Okay, alright, so. Okay, nominations are now closed, we will take a roll call vote on nominations. Alright, we'll do Blaine Green first, those in favor of Blaine Green, hold on, let me write this. Those in favor of Blaine Green, Laura?
Yay.
Uh, Lee?
Yeah.
Ashton?
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
Alright, so there's four yeas, one standing. Do we have to vote on?
Nope.
Okay, alright. Alright, so.
Just actually, it's a search approval.
Alright, just wanna make sure we don't lose. Alright, I need a motion to approve the appointment of Blaine Green. Hold on, let me see, I, I don't have it expected, I talk. To the Board of Education to the five-year term expiring April twenty twenty-nine, need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ashton Fowler, need a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next item, I need a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts payable expenses totaling one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, so we will be having, um, we will be having morning to an executive session, and are we coming back after the executive session?
I think so.
That's the end of the break.
And we'll come back.
Okay, so we're coming back, alright, so. Alright, so we'll go on to the next, um, item, now it's time for anyone to address the council, no action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council, do we have anyone who would like to address the council?
Walter, you got his hands up?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I got my glasses on, I can't see. Sorry, Walter.
No, no worries, no worries. That was one point I wanted to make clear, Ashton had a question or made a comment in relation to getting the deal done, it can be done without the audit. But it, it could be, it needs to be done before, uh, September thirty.
If it's done without the audit?
Yes.
Okay.
I always wanna make that crystal clear, it could be done, that's, that's the, that's the, uh, push to try to get everything handled there, but it can, it can be done.
Thank you, Walter, for calling and finding, I appreciate that.
Chris James, where are we at with the education policy?
I'm not prepared to talk about that, I'm sorry.
So we're, in other words, we're, we're not close, right? Uh, um, thank you, Ms. President.
Oh, hold on, I did, I did have something else, and I should've did this in the work session, hold on, let me find my sheet. So we already talked about the nuisance and abatement appointment, so District Ashton, you need one person, Nate, you need a person, or?
I'm gonna need two.
And Lee's gonna need two people.
I'll have mine next to me.
Okay, and then also too, and I should've done this in the work session, I'm so sorry, Alex, you're gonna have to help me with this update. Um, or maybe Steve, we did reach out to the, um, L C W F, um, people about the, um, the pool situation, about trying to get that taken care of. So, um, we'll hear back something from them, I think it's gonna be July first, because we submitted it, what, May thirty, you said thirty days, is that thirty days? So it's gonna be like, what is that, or is it? Twenty-nine, something like that, so, we should hear back something from them, whether or not they accepted our proposal, the plan of what we would like to do over there, so we can go ahead and get that taken care of as well. Oh, I know what, what it was, this may be the wrong time, we're gonna need to, um, wanted to get with Ed Ford on the fire truck, um. Repairs. Do you have an update on that? I know, I'm sorry.
Will we buy that new, or will we repair it?
But we still can't get a new one for some time, so can you give us an update? Do you have an update?
Oh, I can see, I got parts ordered, they should be used for.
Let me ask you this, is, um, in the meantime, like, even though we know we, we, we got one ordered, is there a way we can? Is there a used one somewhere on sale that we can buy it and get it sooner than the new one? Can you look into that for?
I can look into that.
That's, okay, that's what I should've said, will you look into that? Yeah, so look into that and if, whenever you find something out.
I mean, you're talking like, sure, we got something for back end, right?
Yes, because we do, I mean, we have to, we know that we have to get a new one, but right now, I mean, we're in the position we're in now, we need to see what we can get to, so that we're able to.
Unfortunately, if you order a brand new, it's paid, you're looking at two years waiting.
We know it, we're, we're just, um, Chief Osgood, yeah, we already, yeah, we already know that.
Wanna give an update on units?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about it, we'll.
Okay, but that's, and I'm sorry, um, got a little mixed up while we were switching over the leaders, and I think that's, um, I think that's it. So I'm gonna go ahead and, um. Alright, so we're gonna, I'm gonna read the letter from our city attorney letting you guys know that we're going to executive session, it says, we have an executive session scheduled for tonight. City Attorney Edwin Livingston Junior will address council regarding a need to go into executive session to discuss certain matters. For which an executive session is allowed pursuant to section thirty-six dash twenty-five eight dash seven A three Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. If we are to take action relative to Mr. Livingston's com- comments, I will read the letter from city attorney Edwin Livingston Junior recommending and detailing the Open Meetings Act section allowing such executive sessions. Livingston will suggest going into executive session in order to have discussions of legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation. Controversies not yet being litigated, but imminent, imminently likely to be litigated in the governmental body purs- pursues a proposed course of action. Item, um, motion for council action on recommendation to go into executive session.
I'm hoping to go into executive session.
I thought it was listed on who all was gonna be there, um, do I need to call out who all's gonna be there?
That was on the agenda.
Alright. So you said motion, and Ashton, second, Lee, all in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, once we conclude, um, executive session, the council will, we will come back to the, um, council meeting, um. I don't know if there's gonna be any further business, but we will come back to, to close out the council meeting anyway, so we are coming back. And all council members, Mayor Higgin, city attorney Edwin Livingston, human resource specialist Jane McGee, and city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert enter into executive session at approximately six twenty-eight P M. And we're gonna ask that everybody else leave the room, congratulations, Blaine.